We would like to take this opportunity to welcome you to the Committee to Save Jefferson County, Center Point Candidate Forum. You are going to hear from ten candidates tonight. They will share their vision of a brighter Center Point community. At this time, let us pray. My God, oh Father, we come in the name of Jesus Christ, the Son of the living God. Father, we come with our heads bowed unto Thee, for Thou art God. Father, tonight we ask You to lead us through this forum. Help us, Father, to decide who is the best candidate. But yet, Father, who You serve, or who You would choose, Father? Bless us tonight to ask the right questions, Father, and the candidates are prepared tonight to answer the questions that will be asked of them tonight. Bless them, Father, in a mighty way. We thank You for this opportunity, Father. Bless us. Give us our sins and love us as Your children. In Jesus' name we do pray. And now we'll turn you over to tonight's moderator, William Mahoney.
I want to thank my good friend Reverend Charles, someone that I met some time ago and found to be a very beautiful person. I'm not the regular moderator. I'm sitting in for our true moderator, who is Ms. Sheila Smoot, that's on her way. We have a little mix-up in communication. So I'll do the best that I can. So, I guess I gotta read this. Come on up here so you can help me out. See, Ms. Smoot's younger than me, so I need this kind of help. Alright, so we would like to begin, I'd like to say we are very honored to be here in Center Point. I am co-chair of the Committee to Save Jefferson County, and I'd just like to say, this is about doing all the things we can do to make Jefferson County everything that it should be. So that includes, I guess Center Point, y'all in Jefferson County, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, we, uh, the rules, this is how the forum is gonna flow. Uh, we're gonna give you fifteen seconds to introduce yourself, and then when we get into the question and answer session, you'll have two minutes to answer per question allowed. A thirty-second warning will be given to alert you to the time remaining, and we're gonna start with alphabetical order for candidates to speak. Then you'll have thirty seconds allowed for your closing statements. There will be questions from the audience. Okay? Okay. Alright, so I guess we'll begin with Ms. Jasmine Deloach.
Hello, everyone. How are you doing today? My name is Jasmine Deloach. I'm the founder of Angel Lawrence Women in Teen Organization. I am a human trafficking expert. I bring our rescued victims of trafficking. Our organization, we do a lot of community outreach. We provide resources to people. We do whatever we can to do for the community to make, to bring it up. Um, I've been doing this for ten years. I am always active in the community. I ask you to Google me, look me up on social media, do your research, and if you like what you see, then I ask you to vote Jasmine Deloach for Center Point City Council District One.
Okay, next, Mr. Raymond Olin.
Just stay seated.
We'd like for everybody to stay seated because our camera man is a little peedgy.
Okay, my name is Raymond Olin. I'm from, I'm from Center Point, over on District One. Yeah, I'm from District One. My name is Raymond Olin. I've been here for twenty-five years. I've been involved with city development since I moved to Center Point, or its initial incentive, uh, initial creation. As far as I'm concerned, um, I have three goals: to want to have the streets of Center Point addressed, have the lighting in Center Point addressed, and to have economic development with police participation in Center Point.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tanya Seegers. Uh, I'm a home builder. I got my home builders license. Uh, I also own Gotti Entertainment. I did that entire building. It used to be the shoe shop. I believe in going in distressed communities and starting from the city areas of those cities and building up. So if you look at that building, that building was basically dilapidated. It's now worth over one point two million dollars. I also am, have been a public servant for the federal government for over eighteen years. So it's nice to meet everybody, or whatever the case may be. I'm glad to be here. First, give the foremost honor to our God, the Father. I also want to give homage to the former candidates that we've had, because again, I don't believe in bash, and I just believe in saying, "Good job" to everybody.
How y'all doing? My name is Councilman Glenn Williams. I'm in District Five. I am the only previous council member that's running other than, uh, for the, for the city council. I'm looking to improve the city, work with the administration to get things started the way that things need to be started, and working with, trying to build our own police department and get our parks back in, in great shape, and work on the roads. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Wanda Wright. I'm running for Center Point City Council District Number Five. Now, I am a real estate broker here in Alabama, a previous home builder for the state of Alabama. I've worked with several nonprofit organizations and have since 2005, and also have a great business background, which I believe will be excellent for assisting our city in getting to the next level.
Hi. Hi, I'm Chantae Lee Coleman. Excuse me, my pardon is, I have another engagement. I am running for City Council District Five. I am, know the challenges of the city. I am actually a, I'm in healthcare, and I'm a social worker, so I want to focus on mental health, as well as safety of the neighborhoods, and bringing small businesses to the community. I have a degree in business management, masters in social work, and pursuing a doctorate in clinical psychology.
Okay, um, I have been given a list of questions to start you off with, but, uh, one thing just came to my mind, and I guess I'm ad-libbing a little bit. I'd like to ask each one of you to tell me why you are running for office, and we can begin with Ms. Coleman.
The reason that I'm running for City Council is because I've seen the challenges and the changes that the city has come through. I've been in the city for about twenty-two years. I am the team captain for our neighborhood. I've been the team captain for over five years, so I know the ups, the downs, the good, the bad. When my neighbors have a problem, they always come to me when they need their trash taken out, if they've had death in the family. If there are any issues, I am the one that goes to the city council meetings and I'm able to inform them what changes are coming to the city. So that's the reason I'm running, because I care about my residents. I care about the city as a whole. I work with some of the constituents of the city of Birmingham as well. So I'm running because I care, I want to make a difference, as well as see the changes that Center Point can have.
Hello, everyone. Once again, I'm Jasmine Deloach. I'm running for Center Point City Council because I love to work with people. Uh, my organization stands for unity and bringing the people together. I've been doing it for the past ten years when my daughter became a trafficking victim. I got out into the community to prevent others from becoming trafficking victims, and I started working with the community on providing resources for the community. I think Center Point, it can thrive, and I want to be that person to bring Center Point up. I'm not for one district, I'm for all districts. I want to stand up and I want to be that person to promote change in Center Point and bring Center Point up, and show people that there's a way that we can unify ourselves and make things better for Center Point.
Again, my name is Raymond Olin. I've been in Center Point for twenty-five years. I've been a council member for twelve of those twenty-five, and my objective here is to develop Center Point to be more efficient in its way of transparency as a whole, its efficiency with the handling of its funds, its general fund, its, uh, its road fund money, and policing, which we have been wanting for the last ten, fifteen years. Uh, when we have, we have the opportunity now to implement a police force with minimal, uh, uh, minimal cost to the city right now.
Yes, my name is Tanya Seegers again. The reason that I want to run is because I think that we all should be a servitude to the people. Uh, when we leave here, we have to leave something behind us. Someone before us, they know something for us. So I want to run because I want to be a servitude to the people. That, if you look up the word "servitude," it goes a long way. Servitude is, uh, being there to make sure that we do have economic development, which I don't see a lot of, making sure that we get, get rid of old buildings, we bring jobs in, making sure that we have, like we said, a police presence, making sure that we have lighting at nighttime, making sure that we have parks and recreation. We gotta be a servitude to our neighbors. We gotta be a servitude for each other. So in order for me to be a servitude and give back, I would like to run. I hope you guys have me, and I would love to be a servitude to the people here in this area.
Hello again. My name is Councilman Williams. I'm running again because we have a lot of work to do, and I want lights in the community. I want our kids to feel safe. I want the elderly to feel safe. I'm being sent to point all the time. This is what I do, and everybody know I'm a fighter. Everybody know my background, everybody know what I'm capable of doing, and I'm gonna keep on pushing forward for Center Point. But Center Point is my home. I love Center Point. Thank you.
Again, my name is Wanda Wright. I'm running because not only do I believe in Center Point, but I believe in the people in Center Point. And I believe that the people are ready for more. I've spoken to so many different people, and they speak of what they would desire to see. Now, I'm grateful for everything that our current city council has done. I believe that they have done a great job of moving us forward and keeping us going in the direction that we need to go. But I also believe that it's time to take it to the next level, and in order to take it to the next level, we must have next-level leadership in Center Point. Leadership that's bold, leadership that leads with a greater level of integrity, a greater push and a greater drive, and leadership that can come together and work together. And I believe that I am one of those people that can come together and work together with those around me to get the job done. I believe that Center Point deserves to have neighborhood associations. We deserve to take it to the next level when it comes to our public safety, and when it comes to our community involvement and economic development. And I am ready to work with our neighbors, with our city council, and our neighbor to help get that done.
Okay, um, I'd like to ask this question to Councilman Olin Williams. You said that you were the only previous city councilman that's running for office. Why is that?
Well, I don't know why the other people choose not to run, but I fight. I fight for the citizen, and my track record at city council shows why I fight so hard. So I'm gonna make sure that when people call me to talk to me about a problem, I get out there and I take care of the problem. That was one of the main reasons why I did not choose, I voted against having district, because I wanted to do a large thing. People call me all the time. They see a call, the lady called me the other day, they said, "Mr. Williams, uh, I need your help, but I know I'm not in your district." So I go over there to help them, because I help everybody. That's what I do. That's my best thing, is helping people.
Okay, uh, Ms. Wright, would you, uh, yeah. Oh, that's, I doubt that. Oh, both of them are going to council? Okay, I'll go here.
Well, I can't answer for the other council members of why they are not accepting the challenge. What I can do is I can speak for myself. I'm re-entering the, the run for councilman because, as I believe, I, the twelve years that I served as a council member, running at large was ineffective. You cannot hold any one person accountable at large. You have to have someone accountable. You have to have a direct resource, and you didn't have that at large. So in the last seventy, five years, since the new administration came in after Mr. Henderson, I've been running for district, because district makes everybody, one person sees one person, uh, everybody in the city seat in that district sees one person and holds that person responsible for what's happened.
Okay, uh, Ms. Wright, would you like to address that question? What's, what's your thoughts on that question?
I'll have to repeat the question one more time.
Well, my question was, I doubt that, uh, someone had said that they were the only person running, but it's two people that was on the council that have been running. So why do you think that only two people are coming back to run for council?
In all honesty, I believe that that's pretty much as simple as, I believe that the majority of the people that were on the council, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but most of them all lived in the same district. So in order for them to run, they would actually have to run against one another for that seat. So what their reason for was not, not to run against one another, I can't speak on it because I'm not privy to that information, but I would say that for those of us who aren't, I believe that the majority of us who are running, we're running because we are ready to take it to the next level. We want to see something more, and we know that sometimes when you come into a place, you inherit certain things in those seats, and I believe our last city council inherited certain things that the previous city council did as well, and that will happen again. But I also believe that going into this next place, the people that are in those seats in this season are the people that are supposed, are gonna be there to take it to the place that it's supposed to be, and actually bring those things to pass that we've been working on.
Okay, uh, Ms. Coleman?
I feel, I feel that the previous city council representatives may want to see a fresh face. They've actually achieved what they wanted to accomplish, and they want to leave the torch up to other members of the community. They want to focus on what they planned. They probably want to leave a path for the others to focus on. So I believe that they want us to make a difference, those who are going to be seated in their seats. So I think that they want fresh face, new ideals, and they want others to actually proceed in their steps. So that's the reason I feel that they didn't want to run.
That's very probable. Uh, Ms. Deloach?
Well, I honestly believe that, you know, when some things can't get done, some people have the courage to step aside and let somebody else take charge, and that's the reason why we're running. We're running because we're, we haven't had a chance. You want somebody that had, that haven't had a chance to show you what they can do and how they can bring the community. If you want to know anything about anybody, look them up, Google them, do your research. I'm telling you, I respect the previous administration because they stepped aside and they're letting us take control. I'm not currently in office, but I know the people that are running really want to make a difference, and that's what we're here for.
Okay, Ms. Seeger?
Well, my belief is, I don't like to speak on other people and why they did what they did. I don't go down there grabbing hold. But I will say this, we all know that there is a season, like it's hot outside, and fall comes in. So it's a season for everything and everybody. So I think the reflection needs to be on what's next in our season, and it doesn't matter about the past. The past, we can't do anything about it. What matters is what's next on the agenda. So I want to speak on, again, economic development. We need some money in the city. It ain't no money. It's dry. We need to get some money, we need to get some police presence, we need to get some people that are old, that are big advocates on working together, because even though you may have separate districts, it's very important that everybody respects everybody. You know, there's no big eyes or little eyes. We want to make sure we give a servitude to our, to the mayor. You know, we want to make sure that we're, we're a council that can work with the mayor. We want to make sure that we understand, as they say in the federal, I'll never forget Gil Blackman, she was the executive director. She said, "When my boss says no, be quiet." So we have to get people that understands, sometimes if you don't get the majority, let's not walk away. If I'm not voting in, I'm not gonna give up. I'm gonna still try to be a servitude to the people.
You have about twenty-five seconds left if you wanted to take it.
Okay, I just wanted to say, I just want to make sure that we focus on the future. Let's focus on the future. Let's focus on where we're going, and let's not focus on why he, she, they, we did what they did. Let's focus on what we're gonna do leading and moving forward.
Okay, thank you. What is the biggest challenge currently facing the city of Center Point?
We're going down there?
Yeah, well, hard part, but we'll start with Ms. Deloach. We don't want to start with the same person again.
Okay, yeah, so public safety, that's an issue. It's stopping everything. It's stopping people coming in. Public safety is my top priority because I'm one of those people that call law enforcement, and law enforcement took three hours to come, that I went to sleep and woke up and they still wasn't here. I under, to my understanding, we have two, um, officers on duty in the morning, two at night. We also have public safety officers. But I was having public safety officers, to my understanding, they're not fully in the community. Um, I'm not sure if they're fully in the community. I don't see them. But my thing is, if we have public safety officers, put, put public safety officers, put them out there. Let them work in the community. Let them do what they gotta do to work with the sheriff's deputies, to make things better for the city. Two is not enough for people like fifteen to sixteen, I don't know how many, I think it's like fifteen to sixteen thousand, but two officers is not enough. We're not saying come to our communities to harass our people, but what we are saying is, ride through our communities, police our communities, make us feel safe. Make us know when we go to work that we can come home in our cars, now houses still being attacked. Someone just hit somebody in the parking lot, well, almost hit them. One of my people in the parking lot of the Dollar Tree.
Thirty seconds.
Took off, went across the road, robbed somebody, took off. What I'm saying is, we need more officers in Center Point, and right now is what I'm talking about now. We need officers now. I know we saying something about the police department, but we need them now. That's what I'm saying. More officers, don't come to our city harassing nobody, but show us yourselves and put those public safety officers out.
All right, Mr. Olin?
All right, well, I, I'm going to be redundant here because I'm repeating, and I think everybody's on the same accord, that public safety is a necessary item, but public safety breaks into three separate divisions. One is public safety to me could be a police officer, being at the mall, I mean, at the strip mall, being down at the, on the parkway, or, uh, looking out for traffic, running, or should I say, patrolling the, the neighborhood. But there's a second section to that. How about lighting? I would like to feel safe if I walked down to my neighbor's house, which is five, five houses down, and there's lighting in between the, uh, between us there. I don't have a blind spot to be fearful of. Uh, maybe that lighting needs to be in the malls, in the strip malls, where people can go there and feel, feel safe, because from what I see, we have a police car parked there from, at seven o'clock, parked there in the strip mall. So that means we have less officers out there. We only have one car. That means we have no car out there. So I, 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 again, my thing is public safety. We have to have police visually, uh, patrolled in the, in the area. So again, those are the two of three of things.
Okay, I just want to remind you, candidates, to look at the camera, because this is being live streamed, and people will get a chance, even though they are not here, they'll get a chance to go on YouTube and Facebook and look at this, so it's very important. Don't look at me. Look at the camera. Uh, Ms. Seeger?
Uh, yes, the first thing that I would address is the budget. That's why I say you gotta get somebody that know how to move forward. You gotta look at the budget. The budget has to be addressed first. We gotta look at money that we have laying out there that could be easy or accessible to get in the city. We gotta look at where we'll put in the money and, and where the money needs to go. If you look at the budget, if you take accountability for the budget, and if you place things where you could possibly get revenue in, people do not mind paying a little extra if they feel, as you guys are saying now, safe, if they have extra lighting. So the main thing that we have to focus on before we focus on police, before we focus on economic development, before we focus on anything, we gotta focus on the budget. The budget is the key concise way for us to deliberate to the public their needs. But if you don't address the budget first, you're wasting time. So we gotta look at the budget, and we gotta be creative with the budget. We gotta, you know, like when you're at home and you say, "Oh, I'm down to my last nickel", and you gotta be creative with the last nickel because, how, we gotta get that money. The mortgage company gotta get that money. So we gotta get down to the nitty-gritty and the weeds with it. And the only way we can get somewhere in this community is we gotta look at the budget. The budget has to be addressed, and we gotta look for revenue that we don't have our freedom. Based on the fact, it may be revenue that you guys can even contribute to telling us, "What do you think? What, what kind of, you know, having more meetings?" Or, we just gotta look at the budget. We gotta get an expert in to look at the budget, and we gotta be able to differentiate what needs to happen to move the city forward. Thank you.
Repeat the question. Uh, the question was, what is the biggest challenge currently facing the city of Center Point?
Our biggest challenge right now, talking with people, doing door-to-door knocking, is public safety. And we have to find some way to bring public safety to the community, and then, because we go to a lot of conventions and stuff, and one of the things that's come back from conventions, talking to big souls, talking to big souls, is, "Y'all, public safety." We have to, and we have to try to eliminate some of the things from Birmingham, because a lot of stuff from public safety, when they check us out, check out Center Point, they wind up saying, "Hey, y'all got a lot of crime in y'all area." But most of the crime that we was talking about, you're on the offset of Center Point. So that caused us to look bad when we not really looking bad. So we have to figure out a way to determine, get a police department, budget-wise, we have to figure out a way to get a police department, and then we can start bringing into, things into our community that we need.
I can't see your name, I'm sorry.
Wanda Wright.
Right, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Wright, yes. Okay, the question was, uh, what do I feel is one of the biggest challenges here in Center Point? When I speak to many people, many people speak on public safety, and I completely understand because as a mother of three, I want my family safe as well. I want to be able to walk out the door, and I'm safe, and I thank God that when I do walk out my door, my neighborhood I am, but everyone can't say that. Now, what I will say is this right here, even when it comes to our public safety, I believe that our city is working toward and working forward, doing the things that are necessary, but everything is a process, and everything requires resources and revenue. So in the midst of us focusing on our public safety, we also need to be focusing on the things that are gonna bring more revenue into our cities, so that we'll have the money to push things forward in a more speedy fashion, so they say. And because I know that a lot of people expect- And because I know that a lot of people expect things to be microwave, it doesn't happen that way. There is, there's processes to everything that we do, including our public safety, including getting more policemen, including getting a police department, which many people want and desire. And at the same time, while we're doing it, we have to focus on economic development. We gotta focus on bringing businesses into our city that's gonna build, bring more revenue to our city in order to get the things that we desire and need. Because a lot of people, we want these things, but we don't wanna be taxed on these things, not harshly anyway. So to prevent the neighbors from being taxed on these things, let's bring in the revenue that's needed for these things.
Okay, uh, we had, uh, Ms. Hogan, yes, that came in. And, did we, did you get a chance to answer the question? Okay, well, let's go with the, I didn't mean to skip over that. What is the biggest challenge currently facing the city of Centerpoint?
Well, the biggest challenge, everyone is speaking on safety. So as far as with safety, my suggestion for safety, I understand the concerns of the residents as far as when they're saying about they're not that need public or safety police, or what they, they may be called. However, if we try to teach our neighbors how to be safe, if we work with Jefferson County, maybe the sheriff's department, some prices or needs, if we learn how to handle those protocols ourselves, maybe then we can actually learn how to be more safe. But if we do have the budget to get more police or more safe, uh, safety officers, then we should go ahead and proceed with that. But again, we do have to check our budget. We do want to make sure that our residents are safe, so we actually can train our residents, focus on more programs that are gonna teach our residents how to become safe. Then we won't have to worry about the big businesses trying to come to our area and telling them bad news that, oh, we don't have a police department. But if we have programs in place where our residents can learn how to become safe, then we could let our businesses that are coming into the area know. Well, we do have these programs implemented that are gonna help our residents become safe, and they can utilize that in order to try to bring the businesses to our city for economic growth.
Okay, Ms. Hogan?
Can you repeat the question?
The question was, what is the biggest challenge currently facing the city of Centerpoint?
Okay, good evening, everyone. The biggest challenge that I was told from my district, District Three, when I went door-to-door, from several of the residents, actually, a lot of the residents, they voiced to me their biggest concern was the aesthetics. I, I heard public safety, but it wasn't the top one in my district, in District Three. When I went and stood in their yards, and stood on their porches, and talked to them face-to-face, a lot of them regarding District Three, they said they didn't have a lot of public safety, safety issues within their, that district, but for them, the issues for them was the debris, the trash everywhere. The streets not being really clean, they did not like that. That was a major issue. Another issue for them was a lack of communication. They felt like, you know, we don't really know what's going on in our city. Another issue was, they felt like there was also a lack of transparency regarding the budget. But, like I said, the number one challenge that District Three was facing was aesthetically pleasing. Um, streets are clean streets, debris that's picked up on time. As far as public safety, I do agree with all of the constituents up here who have said the same thing. I'm, when it comes to public safety, because it's not just District Three, we're here to serve the whole Centerpoint as a whole. Whole, I do believe that whatever plan we come up with, it needs to be practical, it needs to be financially responsible, it needs to make sense, um, so that we, whatever we do implement, that it is what works for the city and that it will not bankrupt the city.
Okay, uh, we, we'll go back and start with you, uh, Ms. Hogan. A, a number of people have mentioned transparency with the budget. So, I don't understand what y'all mean about transparency with the budget. I don't think that y'all don't know what's your budget. We'll start with you.
That's a great question. Um, what, the residents that voiced that and said that concerned me, that there's a lack of transparency in the budget. I, when they made that statement, my statement back to them was, do you go to the website? Because I can go to the website. I have went to the website, and I have printed out, um, all of the budgets. I've been able to compare them. I've actually, I mean, everything is spelled out from what I can tell, okay? That's from my, based upon my knowledge point. I was able to pull up every budget, download it, review it, put it side-by-side, see what's changed over the last budget, and even call city hall and speak to city clerk, Ms. Van and others, just to kinda compare and ask questions. So, I haven't experienced a lack of transparency on, for myself, but I did recommend to each resident, if you go to the website, it's there. If you have questions, feel free to ask questions. And that's what we, that's what's out there. It's available, and it's in black and white for you.
Okay, Ms. Hogan?
Well, when I say transparency, I, I'm not dealing with the budget alone, because as my co, uh, part, uh, co-councilperson said, uh, that can be easily accessed. I have a copy of the budget by just requesting it. So I know how much is spent, how much money you got for roads, how much you got for safety, how much you got for internet, internet sales, how much money you've gotten in from the, the city revenue. So that is not a problem. When I say transparency, my problem is this. If you go to the website, or you go to a council meeting, and they are sitting up there and they say, okay, I need to vote on four, five, seven, eight, uh, twenty, twenty-five. All the As? No, no As? Pass. What does that mean? What was one twenty-four, twenty-five? To me, that is not telling me or the public what is, what you're voting on. Oh, we're voting on stairs. Stairs for what? Stairs to the center? Stairs to the church? Stairs to the city hall? There is no transparency in itself at a meeting. And if you go to the website, you're not gonna find that clarity. Now, as, uh, my co, uh, co-councilperson said here, that there is, uh, you can get some information from the website, but you can't get the council meetings. That's not clear. And if it's not clear, I just get frustrated. Why am I coming to this meeting? It doesn't make any sense to me.
So, uh, Ms. Hogan is a council member?
No.
Oh, you're saying, I wanted to, uh...
Of the current council.
And Mr. Olin, is he?
Former council.
Former council. So, when you're saying it's only one, it is in the current. Okay, so, uh, Ms. Sika, you got any comments on that?
Well, if I answer the question of why people are probably saying transparency on the budget, I would say get in the weeds with it. Even though I can download certain things on Google, doesn't mean I understand. So when you get in the budget, again, it's out there in every municipality. There has to be public information, because it's public dollars. But we still gotta look at the budget, 'cause I'm telling you, it's not enough money in y'all budget out here. We gotta get creative. When, when people vote people in, they vote for people to work it out. They don't vote people in to hear, oh, it's still a problem with police. It's still a problem with, uh, light, or it's still a problem. They vote people in to figure it out. You know, when you're at home, mom has to figure out how to keep groceries on the table, but yet pay the power company. So when I talk about the transparency of the budget, it's a bigger picture for me. It's not just what's printed out. It wa, it's what can be done to correct the issues related to public nuisances. So the transparency of the budget, to me, is a much bigger, broader picture, because we have people here today that have issues in the city. Is the budget addressing those issues? Probably not. So again, we gotta be creative people. We gotta get in the weeds with it. We can't just print off something. We can't just do that. We gotta get in the weeds with it, and that's what the council are for. To make sure that we create a budget where people can say, hey, that budget is rocky. But can we really say that now? No, we can't.
So, the citizen, as my, uh, friend and co-chair, Ms. Marcia says, the citizenry don't have anything to do with the approval of the budget? In Birmingham, they have public meetings before they vote on the budget.
That's correct. We have, we have meetings before we vote on the budget. We go, we go in detail. Yes. We have meetings before we go to the budget. We go in detail, and that meeting is public. People come out and sit there and watch us go through the action of what's being spent, what's not being spent, to understand what's going on with the budget. We does do that.
So, you're saying that the public don't attend those meetings?
That's correct. Just like me, as a, as a, as a city council, what happened, I have town hall meetings. I have town hall meetings every two to three months. Only five to six people, out of sixteen thousand people, shows up for the meeting. I send letterheads out, I send, uh, newsletters out, I go door-to-door to make sure these people come out, just like this meeting here. I went online, I went door-to-door, clanging out there, trying to make a difference in my community. That's what I do. But, look at the turnout.
Well, one thing, like I said, we got, uh, Esq. Media, and we find that more people, we, we've had these forums, and if we got twenty people to come out, man, we would have. But with Esq. Media working with us, we've had some forums to where we had thirty-three thousand people that looked at them at their own time, so...
Exactly.
I'm saying that, so you'll be...
Well, we have a thou, almost a thousand now.
Exactly.
We have a thousand?
Almost a thousand, yeah.
Almost a thousand.
Can I say one thing?
Uh, she, I'm gonna introduce Jasmine and, um, Mr. Locs.
I honestly think, um, people are saying itemized online. I think they put the budget online, but it's not itemized, like what is spent. More, you have to request the, you have to request the budget, and to get it itemized, to know exactly where everything is going towards. It don't show all of that online. So I think when they're saying that, that's what they're saying, they don't see it directly online where they can download it on their phones. So that's the issue I think they're having. They don't see the itemized, where you can go up to the city hall and request a copy of the budget.
Okay, uh, Ms. Sika, she...
What I was gonna say is, most budgets have to be itemized. The federal budget has to be itemized. But again, we gotta go back to this part right here. We changing, y'all. Everything's changing. Everything is technical now. So you're not gonna have a lot of people no longer, you know how we, in the older days, you had forums, you had meetings. A lot of people don't meet no more. They're too busy. So what they do for convenience is, as he said, he got one thousand people watching right now. So what we gotta do, again, is be creative. So where he's going door-to-door, she's went door-to-door, or he may be going door-to-door, answering the phones in city hall, what we may need to do is set up all of our meetings where people can view. You know, we gotta be creative to get the newer generation, uh, and some of the older generation...
So the meetings are not, are not televised?
They're live.
Yeah, they are, they are.
They're live.
They're live.
It's, it's a correction.
Okay.
Not live. There is a gentleman that takes it upon himself from city of Centerpoint, what's happening, to make it live. But no, they're not live, or the mayor records it, and he makes it live. But we don't go live like have a technician.
And that's what we do.
My second, my second point here, some, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, someone, someone...
Now, one thing, one thing I got to do is, we are at the point of where Ms. Moot is almost here, so I gotta do rapid fire to try to get this done, so we can't just expand. I wanna know, how does a city of sixteen thousand people only have two police officers in the daytime, and two police officers in the night? If somebody hears about it, can you...
The MOU.
All right, let's begin. We rapid firing, there's other stuff to do.
There's, there's an MOU.
But I think Ms. Wright wanted to address...
Uh, no, I'm moderating to see what you have. Answer the question that I asked. Ask the question that I asked. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't send the answer to you.
All right.
How does a city of sixteen thousand people only have a total of four police officers?
All right, first of all, the, the, uh, budget is itemized. There's a report right there.
Okay.
All right, second, on the MOU, you have to have an MOU. The city has an MOU with Jefferson County. Jefferson County's agreement is to have four police officers.
Memorandum of understanding.
Correct.
Okay, so can you tell me, a city of that size, what is the, either one of you, uh, either of you? A city of this size, I ain't talking about a memorandum of understanding, I'm talking about to cover sixteen thousand people, how many pol, police officers are needed?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
That's what you wanna know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so how come you only got four?
You only got four because the mayor requested on the MOU to have four. That, that is, that is the facts. That is not a council member, that is not a, the responsibility of the, that is the city's, uh, manager doing that, and bringing that forth to the council, and they say, this is all we're gonna spend.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna do this, uh, because Ms. Moot is on her way, and we said we had a question from the audience. I don't know anything about Centerpoint, so y'all have to forgive me. So let's take some questions right quick. No speeches, just questions, so y'all know, y'all live in Centerpoint, I presume. So anybody in the audience got a question?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, my question's regarding Neighborhood Watch. I mean, before the current council got in, we had Neighborhood Watch meeting once a month at city hall. And then each neighborhood was rep, usually represented there. But with the current administration, we hadn't had a Neighborhood Watch meeting at all. And I just wonder, what are your thoughts on having Neighborhood Watch programs?
Okay, yes.
I think we need neighborhood associations. Those are the people that get elected, just like we do. I think we personally need neighborhood association. Regardless of what people think, I think they hold that councilperson accountable for the things that they're doing in the area. And since we went into districts, why not have neighborhood associations in districts? I think this is very vital for us, sir.
I said, good point.
I, I think this is very vital for us, and they'll trump the Neighborhood Watch. We can, we can have that included in the neighborhood association.
We, we doing rapid fires, so we don't go over there. But I just wanna say this, no mayor, uh, any city official stops you from having Neighborhood Watch. You could do that on your own.
My question was on Neighborhood Watch. We used to have neighborhoods meetings.
Oh, neighborhood social meetings.
Right. This whole city would come together and do it all.
Ma'am, thanks, sir.
I have a question. You want me to come up there? Okay, my question is, for eight years, I was president of the largest neighborhood association in Birmingham, Alabama. Sixteen thousand homes. Right now, there's sixteen thousand plus homes in Centerpoint. Why would you want a neighborhood association? When I can handle sixteen thousand homes on the, for eight years, on the biggest neighborhood association, Northeast Lake, I was the president.
Okay, uh, let's, 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 somebody else first, and then, uh, somebody else other than you. Anybody else wanna talk about the head of the program, trying to rapid, rapid fire, rapid fire, 'cause we got to bring the mail, can you do that?
Okay, the question was, why would we want neighborhood associations?
All right, Neighborhood Watch, not associations.
Okay, I did hear her speak about Neighborhood Watch. Now, honestly, I believe that Neighborhood Watches are a, can, are and can be a product of neighborhood associations, that I believe them to be. I have seen great things happen with neighborhood associations. One of the things that I am promoting is neighborhood associations. The reason that I am promoting that within our city and within our communities is because our neighbors have needs. Many of them have a lot of needs, that if we had neighborhood associations organized, then those neighborhood associations may be able to meet more of the needs of the people than are left unmet.
Excuse me for, uh, interrupting you, but, so the mayor's keeping you from having a neighborhood association?
I never said that.
No.
I didn't say that, sir.
So, uh, uh, okay, but it's, what I'm hearing is that you said we need this, like somebody's stopping y'all from doing it.
I'm asking a question.
Let me answer the question. I'll go ahead. We, we actually had a, we had a neighborhood, it was like a Neighborhood Watch. There was a city councilman or woman that was over the actual areas, that we met, all of the captains we met. Now, once she actually took a different position on the council seat, like, you know how you have a public safety representative, you have like a budget representative, you have different representatives. So once that person took another position, we no longer actually had meetings. Now, my area that I'm currently in, which is the Brighton area, I still meet with my residents. Now, my area that I'm currently in, which is the Brighton area, I still meet with my residents. But as far as the other captains, I talk with them, find out what's going on in their area. But whoever is over, like the public safety, we haven't had any meetings with the captains. So that's what happened.
Okay, go ahead, Jasmine.
I'm still pushing for neighborhood associations because those are the people that hold their councilperson accountable for the things that they don't do and for the things that they do. Neighborhood associations don't play. I know how Birmingham operates. They will get you in and they will get you right out. They hold you accountable for everything you're doing. And Neighborhood Watch is included with it because those people run for office just like we do, uh, for city council. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay, um, we're gonna, we're gonna do, uh, final statements from all, let me see, I forgot how many final statements are, how long? But then we gonna start on the end with Ms. Wright's. Thirty seconds, final statement.
Okay, again, I am Wanda Wright. I'm running for city council, Centerpoint, Alabama, district number five. Now, I will say this. I believe that Centerpoint needs another level of organization. And when I say organization, I'm not talking about the city council. I am talking about our neighborhoods. I believe that our neighborhoods should be organized by way of neighborhood associations that brings organizations that, that helps to attend to the needs of the people. And it also helps our city council in the sense that if we can have our president of this neighborhood association working with the people and then that person also working with the city council, we can actually get more done. I also... I also believe that we should focus on community advancement as well as economic development. And in doing all that, if we work on our neighborhood associations and our economic development in turn, we will also heal, fix the situation when it comes to our public safety as well. So October, so August twenty-sixth, elect Wanda Wright, Centerpoint City Council, District Five. Here we go.
My name is Councilman Glenn Williams. I'm running for District Five. We all making different, but we have to do some different things to make Centerpoint strive. Centerpoint does have money. They have money and they can strive. So we have to do things differently to make things thrive. I'm Glenn Williams. I am your city councilperson. And I'm running for District Five for city council. I appreciate your all vote, um, August twenty-sixth. Thank you.
My name is Tanya Seagers. Vote Tanya Seagers, August the twenty-sixth, cause we gonna be creative. We gonna be creative with the budget. Like I said, they got some money. We wanna see some money. Don't y'all wanna see some lights and stuff? And then we wanna get some more money in the doors so that we can be a servitude to the people. So August twenty-sixth, vote for change. Vote for new ideas. Vote for new things and challenges because again, it's not up to you guys to figure it out. That's what you vote people in for.
Okay, my name is Raymond Holden and I'm running District One. And, uh, what I believe is in re-threats. I'm a re-threat. I was a council member at one point for twelve years. Well, I learned from twelve years of experience what the city needs and what is still is needed. Uh, public safety, that comes under the lighting and police work. We can get that done within the next six months to a year. That is assured that that can be done. We can get, we have the money for the roads. We have the money for the lighting. If you give me the opportunity to get back in, it will be, District One, Raymond Holden, I will ensure that this happens.
My name is Sasha Hogan. I'm running for District Three, Centerpoint City Council. Why should you vote for me? Number one, I have integrity. I'm not gonna make you empty promises and say what I'm gonna do and what I'm not gonna do. I'm gonna just tell you this, I'm gonna work hard. I'm gonna be tenacious. I'm going to be boots on the ground to do and fight for my district, period. So I'm here, I'm a person that I've been involved. I've been heavily involved in the community. I've been at events. I've gone throughout the neighborhood to meet people and to actually interact with the people who I want to vote for me. And that matters. So if you wanna vote for someone who's, who has integrity and fresh vision, vote for Sasha Hogan on the twenty-sixth of August.
I'm Jasmine Deloach. Once again, I told you, public safety is my top priority. Economic development, we need to bring more businesses in. We need to clean up our streets. We need to do what we gotta do to take care of our community and our people. We gotta include them in everything that we do. Public relations, once again, I'm pushing for neighborhood associations. I think there's very need to education. We gotta hold community center. We need more community events and things and nonprofits coming into the community center over on Sun Hill Road. We can have a resource hub for our people to have resources. Education.
You can finish it, Jasmine.
Okay.
Finish it, Jasmine.
Education and transit. We need more of all of that. So what I'm saying, vote Jasmine Deloach for Centerpoint City Council, District One. Thank you.
Shantae Lee Coleman, District Five. I, public safety, community development, social economics. I want everyone to know neighborhood association is my heart. I wanna focus on making sure that my residents are safe. I wanna focus on bringing businesses to the community. We need businesses. We need revenue. We need safety.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're gonna now make room for the mayors to come in. Let's give them a big round of applause.